All right, we will call the regular meeting of the Los Alamos Middle City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Dobie.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chirco will lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and remain standing for Councilmember Gross to give the invocation.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I couldn't hear anybody else.
All right, please let us pray. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings tonight as we meet on Zoom to do the business of our community. We ask for your guidance and direction as we make decisions on behalf of the entire community. We ask for your prayers for any of our residents that are suffering as a result of the virus that's going on and letting them know that we're happy to try and help any way we can. We ask for your blessings on our responders who are standing guard, making things safe for our community, both police, fire, as well as our men and women in uniform that are representing the United States Military Service. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, on to public comment. Wendy, we have a public comment?
It did have one gentleman request to speak at tonight's meeting, Mr. Craig Durkey. I do not see him as one of our registered attendees. I do have one call-in user that hasn't identified themselves, so let me just double check. That's the gentleman.
You might mention that to get off the phone or to log in, they've got to push the...
I'm here.
With us?
I'm here, Durkey.
Okay, you have five minutes to address the council.
Yes, my name is Craig Durkey. I'm the founder of Parents Right for Children, advertising firm Jenny Breeze. I've been working on a project that's relative to our military and honor them. We were able to get in Garden Grove a rail quarter to rename it as a War Dog Memorial and third, Southern California War Dog. And your letter, it came from Los Alamos 716, is part of Los Alamos roots of this. And I'd like to present this to you with the letters of support from 716, Quicksilver, and 555. And also that there is, the city of Alhambra has established a banner program, a care program, and also writing to encourage the Los Alamos Bay of Council to look into this because it's an awesome program since you have Los Alamos base there. Also, in that issue is there was a President of the United States signing a LWCF grant, 90% of local outdoor recreation, like you have rail quarter, Rail the Trail, you could develop that with OCTA and have an actual transportation program that would give people a place to go nearby. And then the issue here regarding Umberg, Tom Daley, and Tyler Dees on the issue of a resolution regarding the issue of SCR 59 to recognize the Veterans of Republic of Vietnam Armed Forces Day. The resolution commemorates the day of June 19, 2020, Veteran Republic of Vietnam Armed Forces Day, celebrating courage to sacrifice and contribute to the veterans to California. And so my thrust tonight is to ask the council to consider, since you're close to Garden Grove and George V. Brighamham is a council member nearby the base, that I would hope that this might be with a letter of support from your district or your city that she would maybe want to support a resolution or some form of recognition of your, the American Legion Police, 716, to support what the letter is intended for. Quicksilver wrote a letter in that it says, and you have the document. I'd like to see if there's any interest in this movement to sustain and support this needed recognition of our military. So I keep it short to the point, but I hope you will evaluate it. And they're putting $500,000 of irrigation and trees in by next month. We're gonna 53 trees. It's on Big Sealing Burgers down to Main Street. It's a beautiful thing. And so I hope you get your bike and explore. And you may want to do it in your backyard over there by Los Alamos for the tree drive. So that might be a venue. It's called Rail the Trail, National Park funding. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on this, Mr. Durkey.
Years of research now to a few words. So a lot of background, but I would ask you for your blessing. My work is there for the help. And we're excited, put note of this, the 716, please. They're excited about this project and the league of, most of the league is very excited because the commander of 555 went before them in their meeting. So I hope you'll reach out to that organizations. Okay?
Thank you.
God bless. Take care.
We'll move on to council announcements. Volunteers? Nothing to announce? Dean, you want to start?
I've attended several online meetings for SCAG regarding the Go Human Project and local transportation. Both have been very informative. And other than that, I think that's, that's all that's been occurring since our last meeting last week.
Thank you. Shelley?
I'm muted. There we go. We finally came to an agreement at OCFA with the local 3631, which is the 1100 firefighters. So we're meeting that week to confirm that contract. It's a two-year deal as opposed to a three-year. Basically, put a pause on everything until we predict the future a little bit better. But it was good. We're not going to any kind of, the contract expires in August and we're going to renew it in August, so that's a good thing. Just working with General Baldwin on some runway repairs and crash truck repairs over at the base. Working together, trying to get some funding at the federal and state level. It's a slow process, but hopefully, we haven't been told no yet, so we want to keep the base, at least the runways functional, so they don't traffic to other bases and then we become non-existent. So that's pretty much about it.
Thank you. Tanya?
I'd make sure I wasn't on mute. I attended some virtual meetings. One was with Sheriff Don Barnes. They made a presentation about basically elected officials ensuring that their social media stays safe. And they gave us some information on who to contact and different channels that can be utilized if you feel like you may have been hacked or just different organizations to kind of keep an eye on. So that was kind of, is very interesting and informative. And I'm on the mosquito invectors committee and we had a meeting for that and they're talking to us about how to help with the mosquito issue. I know everybody's kind of dealing with them, suffering with them, whatever. But what I will share to anyone that's within my hearing is the most annoying ones can live in your house. So you have to be aware, they're active at dusk, most active at dusk and dawn, and they can live on even a drop of water. They're like roaches that fly. So you really want to be mindful. They have a program called Tip and Toss, so just don't leave any standing water because they can make babies in it and those babies can stay there and not hatch for a couple of years. So if you want to help yourself with the mosquito issues, these are a couple of tips that I took away. And then there were a couple of wonderful luncheons that I was able to attend for our local law enforcement. And I have to say that I was very proud to be there. We have a very, very hospitable police force. And I can say that proudly. So I went to two different luncheons. Actually, they feed us really well. So anytime the PD are, they're being honored, I'm in the building because they have delicious vittles there. But that was wonderful to see our chief recognized and our staff, our newest police officers, although that, some of them may be young, they have a passion and they're hungry to learn. I don't look at youth like something that you have to frown at. Usually, they're the most hungry ones and they want to learn. They want to grow. They want to be most effective. So that's what I've been up to lately.
Thank you. Mark?
So not too much, other than, you know, we've come up with arguments in favor of our sales tax measure that's going to be on the ballot in November and a rebuttal to an argument against the sales tax measure. I've also been talking to a lot of neighbors about this and giving some today. And I would just encourage anyone who's watching to look into this, do your research and look at the city webpage. There's a page dedicated to fiscal sustainability that provides a lot of the background on this issue. This is the biggest, if not the biggest issue that's faced Los Alamos in years, if not ever. I mean, it is truly about the future of our city, what kind of city we want to have. And in my opinion, you know, what kind of foresight we have and what kind of planning we have to ensure that our city remains the great place that it is. So please, you know, don't go into the ballot box in November without having done some investigation into this. You always want to be an educated voter as much as possible.
Thank you. Like my colleagues, I was able to attend many budget special meetings. And in fact, to the, a note to the city clerk and the city manager, 14 days left in August and we have no special meeting scheduled. So please get on that. We also was able with Tanya and Dean to attend the thank you to the police, the one that was hosted by Art from Madera's. Food was phenomenal. Can say without a doubt, the best cheesecake I've ever had and also without a doubt, I've had my share of cheesecake. I also understand that Councilmember Gross hosted the police in, with the Brew Kitchen Ale House and CI Solution and California Cucina and also Susan Morales from the hospital. So the police are well-fed and hopefully they understand how much we love them here. I'd like to quickly second what Mark said about, to the citizens about bringing yourself up to speed on the budget. It's going to be the number one subject from now until November. But we think we have a good case and we hope you avail yourself to the material to understand it. Thank you. We'll go on to items for the city manager.
Thank you, sir. And I'll be brief. Just two items for you tonight. The first is that the California Independent System Operator, who is oversees the power, I'll call it the Public Utilities Commission and such, issued a warning with regards to the low power reserves that are currently being experienced throughout California due to the heat and the demand on the grid. A warning has been declared and is going to be in effect largely until tomorrow afternoon. At this moment, there are no planned outages in Los Alamos. However, that can change rapidly and sometimes without warning. So we'll continue to keep an eye on it and make sure that we're putting out as much information as we can through our social media channels. And secondly, I'd like to actually turn it over to Evelyn to talk a little bit about some of the scheduled events that we have coming up here.
Good evening, Dean. Is my sound okay? Okay. I just wanted to give you an update on community events. Since we had a successful drive-up Fourth of July fireworks spectacular, we decided to modify our other existing events to be safe during COVID-19. We are actually approaching the last and final music and movies event series sponsored by Memorial Care. We had a concert on August 1st, Frozen Two movie on August 8th. August 15th, we had another concert and we have our final movie, The Lion King 2019, this coming Saturday. All of the events are free, but we do require reservations. They are taking place at Little Cottonwood Park. And they did all sell out, but due to some no-shows, we did open up the ticket system. So we do have about 15 reservations available. We are also celebrating our ZIP Code 90720 on September 7th, 2020 with a couple different types of events. This event is sponsored by Southland Credit Ian, and that's our title sponsor and presented by Memorial Care. So we're doing a Bikes and Bites, which is basically a Los Alamos restaurant tour where you go at your own pace. You can bike or walk or drive. And we are recruiting Los Alamos restaurants to participate currently. And then ticket bundles are on sale at Eventbrite, also accessible on the city's website. Half of the proceeds go back to the restaurants and then half goes to the recreation scholarship that benefits Los Alamos families in need to participate in our recreation programs. Second part of the ZIP Code celebration is a drive-up concert, which is also free. This is going to take place at the Los Alamos Youth Baseball Parking Lot and on Far Corne with the band, they're called Flyer, and they perform a lot at Griffin's Grill. And also this is free with reservations on Eventbrite for the first 70 cars. September 11th and 12th is Serve Los Al. Residents can volunteer, sign up to volunteer at servlosal.org. We have most of the events taking place on the 12th with the opportunities to volunteer at the nonprofits and with the city. And then we have a vet care clinic at the community center on the 12th, a hygiene item donation drive at Little Cottonwood, drive-up health goodie bag pickup giveaway for the first 200 cars at Little Cottonwood. And then at St. Isidore, we're going to do a dumpster day from 3, I'm sorry, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM with no bulky large items or e-waste, just, just cleaning out like your garage and storage and that type of thing. And then later on in the fall, we are planning a drive-through trunk or treat event on Pine Street where Winter Wonderland typically takes place from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And we are inviting the local businesses to participate, just like normal trunk or treat, dress up their trunks and then have the community come out and actually dress up their vehicles for a contest. And then lastly, Winter Wonderland, location to be determined, but we are going to modify that event to be a drive-up light show with a tree lighting and hopefully a, like a holiday-type movie. And that will be at 6:00 PM. And more details to come on the city's website. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add that, you know, obviously every city is changing their operations in order to, you know, make sure that we're doing everything we can to be safe during this time, making sure that we're protecting our residents. But I will do have to say, my hat is off to the Recreation Department. They clearly have found ways to modify, augment, and really take advantage of some of the opportunities that are out there. So we are by far, when I get on phone calls with city managers, our rec department is definitely doing a lot that we're not seeing in other places.
I have a question, so Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
On the drive-up band and movie in the park thing, I got a call from a resident expressing concern for vehicles parking on the grass over at Little Cottonwood. And was it damaging the grass? Do you guys have contingencies in terms of matter replacing it if that occurs?
We haven't noticed any damage, but this is going to be our last, last on the field. And then we are moving to L Y B on the parking lot. So I'm not sure if that resolves that concern, but we, this will be the last event.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for me, sir.
You're muted.
Okay, start over.
Please.
Regarding the warrants, any questions on the warrants or may have a motion to approve the warrants, please?
I'll move.
Thank you, Dean. I will second. Wendy, up to you.
Roll call. Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Chirco.
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes on to the consent counter. All consent counter items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Anybody have anything to pull?
I just had one question. I don't know whether we need to be pulled, but in order to ask the question, pull it, I'll do that.
Dean, I'm hearing about every third word you're saying. You have a question, you said?
On items.
I don't think you need to pull it, Dean, for that. You can just ask the question, then we can move the balance. Is that right, Wendy?
That'll work.
Okay. My question was, is something like this go through the traffic commission before it comes to us?
And the answer is no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
I can.
Okay, Wendy?
Roll call. Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Chirco.
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
I didn't want to pull the item, but on item 11, I want to welcome Epsom. Looks like they're getting really close to opening from driving by today. I think they're going to be a great civic partner.
Yep.
On to number 10, discussion items, designation of a voting delegate and alternate for the League of California Cities 2020 Annual Conference and Expo. Anybody strongly want to go to this?
I am. I'm going to be attending like I did the other one. I thought it was useful and you get the archives of all the videos.
Okay. You'll be going from the, from the fire department? You'll be representing the fire department?
No, I'm going to go as just an attendee from the city, the fire department. We're not members of league.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm hearing about every third word today.
I'll be attending also.
Okay. Does one of you want to be the voting delegate?
Yeah, Dean, you expressed this thrust. If you want to do it, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Y'all make a motion that Dean will be the delegate and Shelley will be the alternate.
I'll second.
Wendy?
We have a roll call vote with Councilmember Gross as the delegate and Councilmember Murphy, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hasselbrink as the alternate. Roll call, Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Chirco. You're frozen, Mark.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah, there we go.
Okay. Councilmember Dobie.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Okay, item B, November 3rd election, consideration of appointment of Soul City Council candidate in District 3. Chat, would you like to introduce this?
Sure, Mayor. Actually, I'm going to hand it off to the city clerk to do the honors on this one.
Thank you.
Item 10B is consideration of appointment of a Soul City Council candidate in District 3. At the close of the nomination period, we had one candidate nominated, Mr. Green, candidate for the fold-up. For the election code, when we only have one candidate or not enough candidates, council has the option to appoint this person to the office or continue to have the seat on the ballot. Regardless of the action that council takes tonight, there will still be an election in the city on November 3rd for District 1 and 2 and for the sales tax measure. Staff is checked with the Orange County Register of Voters and the cost is the same to the city, whether it's 1, 2, or 3 council. And there would be minimal cost for translation and publishing of a cancellation notice should council choose to cancel it. And then it's up for discussion this evening.
Thank you. Any comments?
I do.
Please, go ahead, Mark.
I was just going to say, I don't see the need to hold an election. And unless anyone disagrees, I, I would move to appoint the candidate. But it sounds like Dean had something to say, so let's hold off on that motion.
Okay, Dean, you know, the, discussed this with the people already for transparency purposes. You know, appointing someone really takes the opportunity of a voter to cast their vote and actually elect somebody. While we can do that, and it's likely he will remain the candidate, I think the ability to be an elected council member gives more credence for him as opposed to being an appointed for a four-year term. In leaving it on the ballot, voters can still cast a vote, not cast a vote, or write in someone else if they want. And I think that's really more the decision of the process. So I, there's no, no additional cost to leaving him on the ballot. I would just recommend.
Now, is that Wendy, Wendy or maybe the city attorney? Do you know, would, would the candidate be considered an elected council member as opposed to appointed if we went through with the election?
And he would be considered an appointed council member, but he would have all the same powers and authority as an elected council member.
There might be a question though upon if he wants to run again?
That's correct. If he wants to run again, the designation would have to say appointed council member if he chose to use that.
Regardless, is that regardless, Wendy, of whether we go through with the election or whether we appoint him?
That's only if you appoint him to go through the election, then he could just report as a council member.
So I've got some feedback on that because that was me back in 2014. I did everything I needed to do. I pulled my papers. I started a website. I was ready to go. I put my deposit in and nobody pulled papers. So why in the world would we have an election when there's nobody running? If somebody really wanted to run in that district, they should have pulled papers. And Dean, on your comment of it gives them more credence, I absolutely disagree with that. I had just as much credence. In fact, you were the only one that highlighted the fact that I was appointed those first four years. But in all the other organizations I served in, I was given the same amount of respect and credence and everything else as if I went through an election. There was no difference from me being appointed in 2014 or me winning an election in 2018. The, the treatment by colleagues was identical. So I'm not sure why we would, why would make somebody run against a potential write-in candidate that didn't pull papers and obviously wasn't serious about being that famous.
Can I, let me, let me just tack on to that if I can. You know, this gentleman, he's, he's on our Parks and Recreation Commission. Like Shelley said, he's the only person who pulled papers. He followed the rules. He got the signatures. And I'd like to provide some certainty and bring him into our meeting, not officially, but have him, you know, he'll start attending the meetings or view them online. And we can meet with him to bring him up to speed and he can really hit the ground running and remove any of that uncertainty of, you know, as unlikely as it is, a write-in candidate or, or something else going haywire.
The difference that Shelley brings up is that all three candidates in the 2014 election were unchallenged. So it was appropriate to appoint all three people rather than spend the money to do a, an election. In this particular case, we're doing an election regardless. And I think that the voter, again, since he's already qualified for the ballot, the voter should have the right to cast their vote. I've spoken to a couple people that live in District 3 and they tend to agree with me. I don't think that he will not receive significant votes because he's the only candidate shown. But I would like to see him stay on the ballot.
Thank you. Tanya, you're in this position now, aren't you? Any thoughts?
Um, the, I guess, like, I would be interested to see how he felt about it. You know, because there is something to be said about being able to say, I was elected. The other part is you were uncontested elected, but when you write it out... The other part is, you were uncontested elected, but, when you write it out, still says you were elected, or appointed, and some people might see that...
You froze.
We lost Tanya.
Can you hear me now?
Here we go.
Oh, okay, I'm going to talk right into my microphone, I said that, where'd you, where'd, where'd I get lost at? Oh, my internet connection is unstable.
unstable.
Y'all, the rolling outages is going to get me.
(laughing)
What I said was, has anyone asked Jordan, like, has anyone asked him how he would feel about being elected versus appointed, because on paper, most people, like, there's some, like, you could stick your chest out, "I was elected," where some, um, as was pointed out, they might see appointed as a diminishment of the, of the seat, I'm, obviously, I'm not one of those people, but, it could be said, but it's an uncontested election, so I'm kind of, I would be more interested, like, does he have a, a preference, does he have a, because he might want to go through with it, he might want to get the whole flavor of, the, the whole process, and then that would be cool, but if he's like, you know, "I pulled my papers and I'm safe now," I would, I would be open to considering that.
What makes me nervous about that is we're setting a precedent to let a citizen determine our pro, our voting processes, and we've never done this in the past, it, if there's nobody that's running against it, we appoint, we have been, there's been no exception to that, so I don't know why we would change the rules now, what's different?
Thank you, you know, I, I think Dean makes a good point, and, and also the fact that, um, I think any of us would rather say, "I was elected" rather than, rather than appointed, but I also feel that he went through the rules and, and won, basically, uh, call it a victory, he's, he, he got the seat by following the rules, and I don't think we should put him in a position where he could lose, that would be unfair to, uh, change the rules mid-course, where by some fluke chance, he ended up losing, so, when it comes time, I will, I will make a motion to appoint him to the city council, and endorse Resolution 20-29.
Second.
Anything else want to speak, or just want to vote?
We're voting.
Okay, we, uh, all in favor of appointing Jordan to the District 3 seat, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, I'm sorry, yes.
And just for clarification, we'll be doing item, uh, Staff Recommendations 1 through 4, to appoint Jordan Nefolda to council seat for District 3, and to cancel the election for that seat, uh, they have a motion by Mayor Murphy, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Chirco. Do roll call, Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Chirco?
Aye.
Councilmember Doby?
Aye.
Councilmember Gross?
Well...
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Okay, so the ayes have it, 4 to 1, uh, Jordan, I hope you have as much fun in this job as I have for eight years. Anything else? At 6:35, we will adjourn.
Oh, yeah. You know, you're not going to get a bigger plaque when you leave office because you're shortening.
I'm going to just get the same, I've already got one with two years on, I'm just putting the third year, I'm not getting another one, uh, even though I do have a bigger room in my new house, so, um, so we will adjourn, and unfortunately, we, the city was not able to come up with any meetings for later in August, so, we'll see you in December. My given time?
Yeah, it's only Monday.
Chat said he's not dead yet.
Yeah, he's got it on his keep, he gets paid by the meeting.
Right. Okay, Michael, thank you, you're excellent as always.
Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.